Good evening. Welcome to the January 18, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Strayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Mr. Quintero, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please rise. Flagpole. To the flag of the United States of America. Consider your body forward to stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Yesterday, we marked Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a day for all of us to remember a great American activist and leader. As a follower of peaceful protest and civil disobedience, he reached across political aisles and ethnic lines to bring Americans of all colors, backgrounds, and influences around a unified goal of civil liberty and equality for all. He wrote that, quote, "All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence." Quote. As residents and stakeholders of Glendale, let us live in such a way that we give renewed meaning and breathe new life into this important word. And by doing so, give new life to Reverend King's legacy. We pray and remember all those who fought for and sacrificed in the name of the Civil Rights Movement, and we hope that the lessons of that era are not forgotten. Amen.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the January 18, 2011 regularly scheduled meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, January 13, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Under presentation and appointments, number 3, 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of January 25, 2011.
Spears, Mr. Tectonian.
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. Next week's housing authority, actually, there are no agenda items on the Housing Authority meeting for next week, nor are there any items for the redevelopment agency for next week. City Council meeting, which will commence at 6 o'clock, has three items under consent. At 5A is the city clerk regarding the approval of minutes. 5B is the general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding execution of a standard office lease for office located at 520 East Wilson Avenue. And at 5C is the director of Public Works regarding professional services agreement contract change order with Larry Walker and Associates. And under action items, there is just one. At 8A is the director of Community Services and Parks regarding community services and parks grant portfolio.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item four on the agenda is City Council and Staff comments.
I would like to lead off with some sad news for the city of Glendale and our community. The Glendale City Organization and family was saddened to learn that Jackie Zadyan, a 12-year employee, passed away last week from an extended illness. Jackie was hired in April 1998 by Glendale Water and Power as an Office Services Secretary. In 2000, she moved to the Human Resources Division and served as an executive secretary before being promoted to Office Services Supervisor. In 2003, she returned to her original department of hire, where she most recently served as Assistant and Secretary to Glenn Steiger, the Director of Glendale Water and Power. All of us who knew Jackie recognized that she was dedicated to making GWP and the city of Glendale a better place for the public and for staff. Her loyalty to her job was notable. Jackie is survived by her husband Larry and her large St. Bernard. All of us at the city of Glendale extend our condolences to her family and friends. She will be sadly missed, and I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in her memory. She is on the screen. You? Mr. Weaver.
Hate to follow that with my own comments, but we're in election cycle, and there are certain individuals that are going to start slinging dirt out there. It's for me, I'm not going to take it when it's not true. This afternoon, Mr. Mo Hill accused me of money laundering for something I did in 2005, which I paid the penalty for, for my own sloppiness. It was not money laundering. I don't think he even knows what it means. And I told him, I either produces the evidence, or I demand apology on the news press and at the podium here. Just throw dirt out there and hope people will buy into it. And then, following that, somebody told me that Mr. Barry Allen Silverman, in his Vanguard, made some quotes, and he's talking about Mr. Drayman, Ms. Friedman, and myself. He led into my comment by saying, but the question remains, is Drayman the only elected official that has circumvented the permit process? And he says, "A check on the permits for Mr. Weaver, also a Glendale council member, shows that he has taken out no permit for the addition on his house where there was a dumpster sitting on Havre Camp filled with demolition debris and stacks of construction material in the backyard." I took a couple pictures this morning at my construction site. Do you put them up now? Just want the public to see. Now, there's...
Is that retaining law, Mr. Weaver?
No, it is not. On the left, right, on the left, I had two or three additional bricks up, and I wanted to take them off. The big one in the middle there, I still can't move it, I have to get a jackhammer to break it up. I did it all myself, and as anybody knows, in Glendale, you cannot dump material like that into the green waste, the recollectables, or the general. I called integrated waste. I had a dumpster delivered to my house to put that debris into. It filled about one foot of the bottom of the dumpster, and I paid the $95, $98 fee for that purpose. So, here comes Mr. Barry Allen Silverman, saying, "I'm putting a second floor in my house." That's it. That's all. And he writes in his title, "They investigate, analyze, expose, publicize bribery, corruption, fraud, and graft. Their purpose is to inform, educate, and motivate the people for the nonviolent improvement, engagement, and advocacy in local government." That is lies. Everything he said. Now, he's brought this up, apparently, for weeks. Same as Mr. Mo Hill bringing up about my money laundering. And I know I'm going to see it for the next three months. By God, I'm not going to sit and take people saying lies about me or my family. And I hope the public out there realize, when they look at that stuff, it's all false, misleading, and dirty. Sorry that's happening in this town. I guess Mr. Silverman, Mr. Mo Hill, or I'm Mr. Yasefin, because Mr. Mo Hill spends all day down at Mr. Yasefin's house, and since they live only a few blocks from me, guess who's been driving by my house to see that dumpster sitting out there? Can't be anybody, that other Mr. Yasefin or Mr. Mo Hill, who pats it on to Mr. Barry Allen Silverman, who then writes the garbage. No proof, all lies. I hope the public wise up. Don't look at that piece of trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman. I want to know about that giant dog, Rahat Jhod Dog Bone that was in the picture.
That was my, my family gave that dog bone to my dog for Christmas.
I see.
He left it there.
That wasn't yours?
No. I have Weaver's doghouse, but I didn't have that kind of bone on it.
It is unfortunate, Mr. Weaver, that during this campaign season, there are those in the community who seek to twist the truth and to take every opportunity to unfairly criticize not just those individuals running for election, but all of us. It's not limited to the gentleman that you named. Unfortunately, a member of one of our local governmental agencies is out there beginning his campaign with Barb's attacking the mayor, essentially, as well as the rest of us completely unfounded in a true understanding of the issues. I'm hoping that that is not going to set the tone for this campaign season. We have a lot of serious issues to discuss in the city of Glendale, and I think we would all relish a serious and sober discussion of those issues. Ms. Friedman.
Thank you. Speaking of issues, a few weeks ago, I think it was a few weeks, I've lost track of the weeks, we talked about green building standards, and we had an interesting discussion that's going to be leading to a study session that we're going to have in front of the public. And it reminded me that for a year and a half now, I've been asking for us to agendize, and I've had the acquiescence of my colleagues, the concept of having a sustainability officer of the city of Glendale to oversee just this kind of issue and to be able to bring us information, someone that has experience dealing with sustainability and green issues, someone who has oversight of all of the departments, someone who can coordinate efforts such as the Waste to Energy Project, which right now seems to be straddling and going back and forth between GWP and Public Works, someone who can help coordinate those efforts, someone who can look at the city's own practices and see where we can save money, as well as green up our own city. And as of yet, after a year and a half, I still haven't seen this issue agendized, and I'd like to know why it hasn't been agendized and when I can expect to have this discussion.
Well... I have a... To place it on the agenda as soon as possible, but if there's a timeline for that, Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilwoman Friedman, we will get it on the agenda as soon as possible. We've had some internal conversations about the process in which we want to go, by in which we want to have a green officer, and we've had some conversations with Hassan Hagani, and we'll get that figured out and bring a report forward here by the end of February. Let's put that out there so that we get it done.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. I just have two other brief items. I heard from some residents the other day, obviously highlighting the shortage of parking that we have on our city streets in the downtown area of Glendale and southern part of Glendale. And the recommendation and the suggestion from several of those residents was to maximize the number of vehicles that can be parked at the curb, and to do so by painting the white hash marks every, you know, within the standard length of a vehicle. So, people inadvertently sometimes park in the middle of, you know, a parking spot, and it can reduce the number of parking, the parked vehicles by 30, 40, 50 percent at times. So, if you could let us back, come back with us, Mr. Zern, or run it through the TPC, I think you know what I'm talking about. It's just to put the Ts so we can, you know, make best efficient use of our shortage of curbside parking, and it may go, it may play just a small role in making the quality of life better for some of the residents in that area. The next and last comment I have is, I'm going to be participating in a discussion panel. Rob, or Brian, if you have that graphic that I emailed you about 2:30 this afternoon and said, please, oh, there you go. So, there's going to be a discussion held at Marinatha High School, which is located at 169 South St. John Avenue, Regional Transportation 101. Two panels. The one I'm on, I expect is going to be one of the more contentious panels. That is involving the 710 Tunnel. I'm on a panel with essentially tunnel supporters, someone from Parsons Brinkerhoff, obviously one of the large consultants that stand quite a bit to gain if the tunnel goes through. So, if you're interested in seeing a lively debate Saturday morning, I'm outnumbered, but that hasn't stopped me before from stating my opinion and letting people know what I think is best transportation options. That'll be Saturday, this Saturday, Marinatha High School, which is the site of the former Ambassador College, right there, just south of Colorado. I believe it starts, or it is, at 7:30 to noon. So, mission is free, and it should be an interesting evening, interesting morning. Thank you.
Good luck.
Any comments from staff? Let's move on to the next item.
Next item at five is consent items, and this includes the minutes. Following the routine and may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. And we have one request to pull 5C.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian. Yes. Please read 5C into the record.
5C is Director of Public Works regarding fiscal year 2010-2011 Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, curb ramp and sidewalk repair and installation program, Plan Number 1-2959, Spec. Number 3437. C1 is a resolution adopting plans and specs and directing city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Zern, we have several speakers who wish to address this item. If you could, please, give us a capsulized version of the issues at stake here. We can maybe take it from there, and then, anything specific, we can come back to you for further info.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual sidewalk repair program. This is an item that has, at least once a year, in some cases, the last couple of years, due to favorable bids, we've come back to you two times to do general sidewalk repairs. We budget approximately a million dollars each year for the repair and upkeep of our sidewalks. This particular program, I believe, is unique in that we have a section of sidewalk on Grandview that we are installing for the first time, new sidewalk. This came as a result of comments made by residents or a resident of the area, and then we were asked by council to follow up on that. And the fact that from about Kenneth north, there are no sidewalks up to Mountain, and essentially, the resident indicated the connection to Brand Park. So, we looked at a couple of different options to install sidewalk there, obviously the two options on the east and west sides of the street. And the east side of the street provided us the best opportunity to do that. We were able to come up with a design that we think is very workable and very cost-effective considering a new installation. And that will be, it will entail putting in new sidewalk. We don't need any public, it's all being done in the public right of way. We do have to make some adjustments to driveway aprons and so that the transitions remain consistent with the way they are now. And we'll have to replace about 12 to 14 trees in this particular area. But again, this is, this is a section that has no pedestrian access. And by some accounts of the resident in the area who brought this to our attention and our own observations, what we do is, we'll see people walking, because there's parking as well, they're actually walking in the travel lane. So, this provides a safe pedestrian access for all pedestrians, not just disabled pedestrians, but all pedestrians. Some of the examples that were cited were children on bicycles, mothers with strollers, seniors just walking, and also the disabled as well. So, we included that as part of this annual upkeep and maintenance program.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quintero, then Ms. Friedman.
In terms of the trees, is there, and I drove by there to check it out, is there any way to save the trees, even to box them and...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Quintero, we looked at, at any way we could to possibly save as many trees, meander the sidewalk and so forth. We have a very limited public right of way, so without taking dedications into the private property, these were the trees that we felt we would have to replace. I will mention, I don't know how many, our arborist had looked at all of the trees and indicated that at least a few of them needed to be replaced regardless of whether we put the sidewalk in or not. Majority of these trees are liquid amber species. We're replacing them with a light species of liquid amber. However, we're going to put the seedless liquid amber back in. So, those aware of the seasonal pods that drop from these trees, the new species will not, not have that. They'll be a seedless variety. And a 24-inch box is about the biggest replacement tree that we can put in a parkway setting. And that is because anything bigger than that requires mechanical installation and usually excavations that go beyond what the parameters of the parkway are. So, we did look at every possible way that we could to try to save the trees there, and keeping it to, to under 15 trees, we thought was, was at least the best we could do here.
Ms. Friedman.
I'm wondering if you can speak to the amount of pedestrians that we think are using that road? Do we have any kind of a survey? And also, if you can just talk a little bit more about the safety issues.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Friedman, I don't have a number or a survey of the number of pedestrians who use that, that particular route, except to go by what some of the neighbors have told us, which is, it's a pretty, pretty well-traveled, at least trying to access the park, people out getting exercise and that type of thing. I don't, I don't know the exact numbers. But, as you know, in our particular situation, we face an ongoing challenge to pedestrian safety everywhere, at intersections, on sidewalks, and so our thought was, wherever and whenever we can get people out of and away from traffic, that that was a good thing. In this particular case, there was one option on the east side that allowed us to put it in with minimal impact, as I mentioned in a note I sent out. The west side would have required a lot more private property dedication and retaining structures and so forth, just based on the topography and the size of the setbacks and those kind of things. So, our thinking was, and again, not just strictly from an ADA compliance standpoint, this was from a pedestrian safety standpoint, get people out of the traffic lane and give them a clear and safe access up to another point, this case, Mountain, that has also sidewalks to get them to wherever they're going, maybe not necessarily the park, but anywhere, just, just out to get some exercise or to walk down to Kennet Village or something like that, that this was a very positive thing. And we think, from our perspective, this is a good estimate, a good price, based on the favorable bids we have been getting lately for concrete work. Did I, was that, did I answer your question?
Let's go to the public, then I'll come back for other comments. Phil Rawls, followed by Richard Espiritu.
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here today really to ask for a severance of this item from the consent menu and to ask for a postponement. I wouldn't ordinarily like to do that, however, there was some misinformation that was given to us that, that didn't really allow us sufficient time to prepare for an adequate discussion of the issues. Now, you know, I want to thank many of you, because I've pestered you, I've sent you a number of emails. Mr. Howard especially has been bothered by me on a couple of occasions, trying to clarify some of the issues. One issue that I think is important in the clarification, if we can go to the next slide, go on to the next one. There was a meeting held at Brand Park for the, for the community at which the opening statement, I'm told, I wasn't at that meeting for reasons that are good reasons, but apparently at that meeting, the opening statement was that this sidewalk is, quote, "required by the Americans with Disabilities Act." Okay? And in fact, the person I talked with today said they called the city today and were told exactly the same thing. And it's Mr. Howard, I think, who can tell you that this is, the sidewalk is not required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. In fact, is a matter of policy for you to decide, which I think is appropriate. I will also say that there is by no means unanimity among the neighbors about this sidewalk. Some are in favor of it, and some, like me and my wife, and some others oppose it. But we feel that in order to have a fair hearing on this issue, we need to have the additional time to continue gathering our petitions and gathering facts, and so we can have a fair discussion of the issue. And that's really what I'm asking you to do today. I have a brief presentation, if you want, that sort of highlights some of the objections to it, but...
Well, you have, it's your three minutes, so if you'd like to go through it, I mean, it's up to you, I can't tell you what.
Well, the main, the main thing I'd like you to do is to sever the item and to postpone it to a later date so that there's more time to, to prepare for an adequate discussion. But just to speak to some of the things that Mr. Zern talked about, we can go through quickly. We talked about the Americans with Disabilities Act, 150 to 200...
...best transportation options. That'll be Saturday, this Saturday, Marinatha High School, which is the site of the former Ambassador College, right there, just south of Colorado. I believe it starts, or it is at 7:30 to noon. So, mission is free and it should be an interesting evening, interesting morning. Thank you.
Good luck.
Any comments from staff? Let's move on to the next item.
Next item at five is consent items, and this includes the minutes following the routine and may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed. And we have one request to pull 5C.
Okay. Mr. Weaver.
I'll move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. Please read 5C into the record.
5C is Director of Public Works Regarding Fiscal Year 2010-2011 Americans with Disabilities Act (ADA) curb ramp and sidewalk repair and installation program, Plan Number 1-2959, Spec. Number 3437. C1 is a resolution adopting plans and specs and directing city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Zern, we have several speakers who wish to address this item. If you could please give us a capsulized version of the issues at stake here, we can maybe take it from there, and then anything specific, we can come back to you for further info.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is our annual sidewalk repair program. This is a item that has at least once a year, in some cases, the last couple of years due to favorable bids, we've come back to you two times to do general sidewalk repairs. We budget approximately a million dollars each year for the repair and upkeep of our sidewalks. This particular program, I believe, is unique in that we have a section of sidewalk on Grand View that we are installing for the first time, new sidewalk. This came as a result of comments made by residents or a resident of the area, and then we were asked by council to follow up on that. The fact that from about Kenneth north, there are no sidewalks up to Mountain, and essentially the resident indicated the connection to Brand Park. So, we looked at a couple of different options to install sidewalk there, obviously the two options on the east and west sides of the street. And the east side of the street provided us the best opportunity to do that. We were able to come up with a design that we think is very workable and very cost-effective considering a new installation. And that will be, it will entail putting in new sidewalk. We don't need any public, it's all being done in the public right of way. We do have to make some adjustments to driveway aprons and so that the transitions remain consistent with the way they are now. And we'll have to replace about 12 to 14 trees in this particular area. But again, this is, this is a section that has no pedestrian access. And by some accounts of the resident in the area who brought this to our attention and our own observations, what we do is we'll see people walking, because there's parking as well, they're actually walking in the travel lane. So, this provides a safe pedestrian access for all pedestrians, not just disabled pedestrians, but all pedestrians. Some of the examples that were cited were children on bicycles, mothers with strollers, seniors just walking, and also the disabled as well. So, we included that as part of this annual upkeep and maintenance program.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quintero, then Ms. Friedman.
In terms of the trees, is there, and I drove by there to check it out, is there any way to save the trees, even to box them and...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Quintero, we looked at any way we could to possibly save as many trees, meander the sidewalk and so forth. We have a very limited public right of way, so without taking dedications into the private property, these were the trees that we felt we would have to replace. I will mention, I don't know how many, our arborist had looked at all of the trees and indicated that at least a few of them needed to be replaced regardless of whether we put the sidewalk in or not. Majority of these trees are liquid amber species. We're replacing them with a like species of liquid amber. However, we're going to put the seedless liquid amber back in. So, those aware of the seasonal pods that drop from these trees, the new species will not have that. They'll be a seedless variety. And a 24-inch box is about the biggest replacement tree that we can put in a parkway setting. And that is because anything bigger than that requires mechanical installation and usually excavations that go beyond what the parameters of the parkway are. So, we did look at every possible way that we could to try to save the trees there, and keeping it to under 15 trees, we thought was at least the best we could do here.
Friedman.
I'm wondering if you can speak to the amount of pedestrians that we think are using that road? Do we have any kind of a survey? And also, if you can just talk a little bit more about the safety issues.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Friedman, I don't have a number or a survey of the number of pedestrians who use that particular route, except to go by what some of the neighbors have told us, which is it's a pretty, pretty well-traveled, at least trying to access the park, people out getting exercise and that type of thing. I don't, I don't know the exact numbers. But as you know, in our particular situation, we face an ongoing challenge to pedestrian safety everywhere, at intersections, on sidewalks. And so, our thought was wherever and whenever we can get people out of and away from traffic, that was a good thing. In this particular case, there was one option on the east side that allowed us to put it in with minimal impact, as I mentioned in a note I sent out. The west side would have required a lot more private property dedication and retaining structures and so forth, just based on the topography and the size of the setbacks and those kind of things. So, our thinking was, and again, not just strictly from an ADA compliance standpoint, this was from a pedestrian safety standpoint, get people out of the traffic lane and give them a clear and safe access up to another point, this case, Mountain, that has also sidewalks to get them to wherever they're going, maybe not necessarily the park, but anywhere, just out to get some exercise or to walk down to Kennedy Village or something like that, that this was a very positive thing. And we think from our perspective, this is a good estimate, a good price, based on the favorable bids we have been getting lately for concrete work. Was that, did I answer your question?
Let's go to the public, then I'll come back for other comments. Phil Rawls, followed by Richard Espiritu.
Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I'm here today really to ask for a severance of this item from the consent menu and to ask for a postponement. I wouldn't ordinarily like to do that, however, there was some misinformation that was given to us that didn't really allow us sufficient time to prepare for an adequate discussion of the issues. Now, I want to thank many of you because I've pestered you, I've sent you a number of emails. Mr. Howard especially has been bothered by me on a couple of occasions, trying to clarify some of the issues. One issue that I think is important in the clarification, if we can go to the next slide, go on to the next one. There was a meeting held at Brand Park for the community at which the opening statement, I'm told, I wasn't at that meeting for reasons that are good reasons, but apparently at that meeting, the opening statement was that this sidewalk is quote "required" by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Okay. And in fact, the person I talked with today said they called the city today and were told exactly the same thing. And it's Mr. Howard, I think, who can tell you that this is, the sidewalk is not required by the Americans with Disabilities Act. In fact, is a matter of policy for you to decide, which I think is appropriate. I will also say that there is by no means unanimity among the neighbors about this sidewalk. Some are in favor of it, and some like me and my wife, and some others oppose it. But we feel that in order to have a fair hearing on this issue, we need to have the additional time to continue gathering our petitions and gathering facts, and so we can have a fair discussion of the issue. And that's really what I'm asking you to do today. I have a brief presentation, if you want, that sort of highlights some of the objections to it, but...
Well, you have, it's your three minutes, so if you'd like to go through it, I mean, it's up to you, I can't tell you what.
Well, the main thing I'd like you to do is to sever the item and to postpone it to a later date, so there's more time to prepare for an adequate discussion. But just to speak to some of the things that Mr. Zern talked about, we can go through quickly. We talked about the Americans with Disabilities Act, $150,000 to $200,000, maybe that's reasonable in the city budget, but it sounds like a lot of money to me. And I haven't been able to nail that figure down. I sent Mr. Starbord an email asking for the exact budgetary figures for that, but I received no response for that. There are a number of mature trees that will be cut down, which I think is undesirable and will impact the neighborhood adversely in terms of the feeling of the neighborhood. Go ahead, please. This is just Mr., the quote from, now, Mr. Howard explained to me, after careful analysis by his office, that this in fact would not violate the Americans with Disabilities Act, which on the face of my reading of it, I thought it did, but I certainly defer to his analysis of that. And he says that because of various issues, it is actually okay with regard to the American Disabilities Act, but by no means is it required by it. Go ahead. Next. Go ahead, that's just, you know, I thought maybe we could use the $200,000 to make the issues in Brand Park more acceptable under the ADA, which, there's a big PDF report on the website about the problems up at Brand Park. Go ahead. This is a, now, Mr. Zern, I hope you don't take this the wrong way, it's not really intended to be an ad hominem or criticism of you, but I had to smile when I got this email from you. And you said that the trees will need to be removed. However, reforested the entire area is part of the project, I believe we are actually adding trees as part of the process. And I have a cartoon in my collection of cartoons, which immediately came to mind. Next, please.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay. I'll leave you with that.
Okay. Is that you in the suit or the chainsaw, Mr. Zern?
It actually looks like the same suit you're wearing now.
Richard Espiritu, followed by Colin Bogart, and then Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and the staff. I am Richard Espiritu. I'm glad to see we're finally doing something on Grand View. Two years ago, I made a PowerPoint presentation called Glendale's Version of Tenement Square. Then my truck walked coming down the street, gentleman walking up, and it came. I don't know if you remember it, I'm sure Mr. Najarian remembers that PowerPoint presentation. The only question I have is why has it taken two years for this city to come to the conclusion that there is a problem on Grand View? There were mothers in with strollers running up and down the street. I was up there, that's how I got the picture. The other thing is that I'd like to give you a quote. This is from a German theologian, Dietrich von Hofeffer. "The test of the morality of a society is what it does for its children and its disabled." I am in favor of these curb cuts, I am also in favor of the sidewalks. However, you're putting it on the east side, the gentleman that I was talking about, and I took the picture, lives on the west, on the west side. So, he still doesn't have access, but that's beside the point, we're trying. As regard to ADA, Barden versus Sacramento, which is a case law, does talk about sidewalks, and that is an issue. And I'm sure Mr. Howard will attest to the fact that accessible sidewalks are a requirement according to Barden versus Sacramento, because that went all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court. So, I think there's some very interesting issues here, and since I only have one minute left, I would like to ask one question. We're not sure who the contractor is. I'd like to know, will that contractor wind up being a contributor? Because according to the staff report, this is a project that's supposed to run between $550,000 and $600,000. So, I'd just like to know if this is campaign, if there's going to be any campaign contributions to the war chest of the potential candidates running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Bogart.
Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, city staff, good evening. My name is Colin Bogart. I work for the L.A. County Bike Coalition, working with the city of Glendale, as you know, on the Safe and Healthy Streets Project. And I'm sure it's no great surprise to you that I would support this project. In general, I am supportive of any project that includes the installation of sidewalks to better enable pedestrian access throughout the city. What I wanted to do tonight briefly is just give you a little bit of information that I could share with you that we've collected as part of the Safe and Healthy Streets Project that might help provide a little bit of context. First of all, as you may recall, in the fall of 2009, we hosted about five community meetings in which we were asking Glendale residents to tell us about their experiences walking and biking in the city. And I can tell you, among the common themes that came up of those meetings is that residents in Glendale said that they really enjoyed walking in the residential neighborhoods of Glendale. And in particular, they notated that they liked walking in the northwest section of Glendale. That was one of the areas that was among sort of the favorite locations. I can also tell you that in our bike and pedestrian survey that we did online, Brand Park and northwest Glendale are mentioned as well as a favorite place for walking and biking as a response to one of the questions that we asked. And I would also mention that at our Brand Park meeting from 2009, we did have at least one resident who mentioned that she was unhappy that there weren't sidewalks on Grand View because she took the bus, got off at Glen Oaks, and walked up the street, and was surprised to find there were no sidewalks on Grand View. Additional bicycle pedestrian survey information that we collected online, 29% of the survey respondents indicated that they liked to walk for non-work or non-school-related trips. 89% of the survey respondents said that they liked to walk for exercise and health. When we asked five areas that we, that they would recommend for improvements for pedestrians, we got responses for places all over the city, but I can tell you, a lot of them ended with the comment that they'd like to see sidewalks at this location or that location. So, my sense is that from at least the survey responses that we got, there's, there's good general support for installation of sidewalks for pedestrians. I also want to provide you with a little bit of health information. Our place grant project is funded by the L.A. County Department of Public Health. Some of the information that they've provided me was indeed the impetus for why the place grant was chosen to be awarded to the Bike Coalition and the City of Glendale. One statistic is that almost 40% of adults in Glendale engage in minimal to no physical activity, and a little more than 66% of adults drive to go to an errand less than one mile from their home. So, the gist of that is if we want to encourage people to walk for their health and for simple trips like an errand close to home, sidewalks will do it. The research also indicates that people will walk for recreational purposes simply if the facility is provided. Finally, I just wanted to mention some FHWA, Federal Highway Administration, stats that I found in a brochure, talking about the benefits of pedestrian infrastructure. And I ran out of time. I can provide that for you if you would like it. There are benefits. If you would like them, I can certainly send them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. You know, about three years ago, I never thought about walking much, I always did a lot of walking. But one evening in particular, it was kind of like twilight at the time, over there by Adventist Hospital, and my wife did a trip and fall. Mr. Zern knows all about that, because I showed him the pictures, and about a week or so later, he spent thousands of dollars fixing the sidewalks up in Glen Oaks Canyon. I appreciated that. But the point is, we're not proactive, we're reactive. That brought me to thinking about the claims against the city of Glendale for a trip and fall. If councilor remembers, a few years back now already, I brought a list of thousands of dollars of claims against the city. I remember one councilman in particular with the last name of Weaver says to me, "Mr. Mohill compared to Los Angeles, we're doing a great job." I said to Mr. Weaver later on, "I don't live in Los Angeles, I live in Glendale, I pay Glendale taxes, and I expect my public works department to work for me and not for the city of Los Angeles." Am I asking too much? What we need is better management, better of the streets, sidewalks, or are employees being trained to make sure our sidewalks are maintained and our trees are trimmed on time, not after a windstorm. Again, why can't we be proactive? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards on this item? Discussion or comments? Mr. Weaver?
My comments. Certainly don't know what Mr. Mohill was talking about in relation to the item on the agenda, but that's not unusual. Mr. Rawls, pleasure seeing you again. Remember, we had the dealings with trees in the past, and...
It's been years.
Yeah, it's been years now. I enjoyed the relationship, but I have to tell you, as you said, not everybody agrees on an issue. This is one where I agree with you. Big thing for me is the safety. I'm going to be a grandfather in two days, that's a certain. Don't want to see my grandchildren in strollers or whatever being pushed up or down Grand View. Steep, fairly steep street, and it's, it'd be dangerous to be out in the traffic lane trying to push a car up, walking with small children, five, six years old. So, safety to me means everything. I believe if you put in the sidewalks, regardless how many people walking there now, there's going to be more walking. It'd be the avenue to take your kids up to the park, which is what we would love to see. I just hope I don't see too many bicycles on it, because I've been almost run over by bicyclists in the residential and commercial zones. So, I hope they're cognizant of the fact that it's a fairly, you can get going on that street coming down. I know there's the trade-off on the trees, I understand that. But the one I come back to the most is Glen Oaks Canyon, where I grew up. Decades ago, there were no sidewalks in Glen Oaks Canyon at all. And they finally put sidewalks on one side. I tell you, you can't believe how many people I see walking on those sidewalks with their dogs or taking their small children down to Glen Oaks Elementary School. Those sidewalks really do a lot. We have motors in there that get 40, 50 miles an hour up and down Glen Oaks Canyon. If those parents and those dog walkers had to get out in a traffic lane where right now there's only about one, less than two feet between parked cars and the traffic lane, you want to put kids out there? That's deadly. I could never accept doing that, putting our children into those kind of conditions. So, I have to come down on doing that. I think it'll be an improvement, it certainly was on Glen Oaks, and I think it'll help the park too with them going up. So, pleasure, this time we're on different sides of the issue. Thank you for coming down, though.
Hey, thank you. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move 5B1.
5C1.
5C1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications. Cards for announcements.
Okay. Ms. Weisman, no. Okay. Let's move on to the next item, then.
We will return to five-minute portion of oral communications. At eight under action items is 8A, Director of Information Services Regarding Amendment to the Agreement with the City of Burbank, the mutually shared data center space for backups in the event of disaster recovery. 8A1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement with City of Burbank in the amount of $10,553.43.
Secure backup, remote location, in case Glendale melts down, we'll have our records to retrieve from Burbank. And the price is $10,553 additional. Is there a motion or discussion? I don't have any cards...
So moved.
Second.
We have a super storm, it won't matter where.
At all of us. 8A, a motion by Mr. Quintero for 8A1, is there a second?
Second.
By councilmember.
Seconded by my colleague. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Aaron Najarian.
Yes. Next item?
Six at oral communications. Discussion is limited time, it's not part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to a speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. And city manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation or report.
Thank you. First speaker is Richard Espiritu, followed by Mike Mohill.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. Last week, I told you that my mother was born in Mexico. There's been some indication about the longevity of people living here in the city of Glendale. My mother's maiden name was Soto. My uncle Tele, before he died, used to ask me, "You know, there's a street named after us, Soto Street." In the mid-1750s, two brothers left Mexico, and in 1798, Guillermo Soto became the alcalde of the city of Los Angeles. 1798. At that time, there were only three states that had signed the Constitution of the United States. That year, Connecticut signed it. His brother moved to San Francisco and was the commandant of the Procedio de San Francisco. And yes, the Street of Soto does run from to San Pedro, which was the original port of the city of Los Angeles. And it was named after him. I want to address the issue of ADI, and I want to be very brief with that. I want the city council, staff, and contractors to remember one thing. There was a book written 3,000 years ago by a gentleman by the name of Solomon. He is known for his wisdom. I'm going to quote from one of his proverbs, Proverb 11:16. "The treacherous are caught by their own greed." With that, I want to thank you very much for your time.
And you, Mike Mohill, followed by Herbert Milano.
My name is Mike Mohill, long-term resident of Glendale. This afternoon, I came before the housing authority, and I asked several questions. Ultimately, Mr. Quintero said my questions were rhetorical, and then they hid behind Mr. City Attorney for any questions of follow-up. I asked, the first question was, what, I would like to ask council authority members, okay, I would like to ask council authority members, the timeframe between the acceptance of campaign contributions, and when a member can vote on a housing authority... of campaign contributions and when a member can vote on a housing authority issue without a conflict of interest. What is the rule today and what were the rules back in two thousand and seven? I also ask about building permits, and who takes them out? Is it the contractor or the owner? And again, silence from this council. I remember Mr. Draymond saying to me, "What newspaper article was I talking about that ADI did work in my house?" Well, Mr. Draymond, it was the article in the Los Angeles Times and the Glendale News Press dated December twenty-nine, twenty-ten, in which it says the following. "Draymond acknowledged having hired an ADI subcontractor, Glendale-based National Fire System and Services, to renovate his condominium last summer. National Fire in turn hired at least six other ADI subcontractors, according to a list Draymond provided." Well, now we have the question of campaign contributions. Now, the LA Times talked about the campaign contributions in two thousand and nine. I'd like to talk about the campaign contributions in two thousand and seven. Mr. Espiritu, would you please bring out my PowerPoint presentation? Can the camera see, can the folks see it? In April two thousand and seven, Councilman Draymond won his election. But notice, ladies and gentlemen of the jury, that in May, the seventeenth, sixteen, seventeen, the twenty-four, he received from Firecom Technologies one thousand dollar campaign contribution, National Fire Systems, nice company, right, Mr. Draymond, a thousand dollar campaign contribution, Ivan Construction, a thousand dollars, and Allen Construction Company, a thousand dollars. And of course, there were other ones, but I don't want to bore everybody here. Notice also, I put a little hyphen, a little asterisk, that in March of two, of two thousand and seven, Glendale Police Officers Association gave Mr. Draymond a two thousand dollar campaign contribution. Got that all, folks? Okay. Next card, Richard. A month after Mr. Draymond received his thousands of dollars of campaign contribution from ADI contractors, subcontractors, which he says, "I know nothing about this." He went ahead, can the camera see this, please, for the folks at home? He was on the close, they had a closed session on ADI, Glendale City Lights. Why we sit behind closed doors, Mr. Draymond and council members? Isn't the public supposed to know how you're spending our dollars? These are federal, state and city dollars. I pay taxes. I guess you folks don't. In July, Housing Authority proposed a loan agreement for nine point eight million dollars for ADI, in which Mr. Draymond and all the council folks behind closed doors again. In January two thousand and eight, Housing Authority, another closed-door ADI discussion. In July two thousand and eight, Housing Authority and Glendover, uh, Glendover Development Agency, ADI request twelve point two million dollar subsidy. Wow, and the list goes on, doesn't it, folks at home? In November two thousand and eight, Housing Authority and Glendover Development Agency, ADI app approval loan of fourteen million dollars. Where's my hand? I'm only supposed to be secretive man here. And Draymond, in two thousand and seven, remember this, Mr. Draymond, you recused yourself from voting on the Police Officers Association because you just, you didn't want to vote on their pay raise, remember? You said, "I just got a campaign contribution, therefore I can't vote on it." But yet, you had no problem with these subcontractors after they gave you money on voting ADI stuff. What is the public supposed to think? I don't know about you, but I think my hand should have been out a long time ago.
Herbert Milano? Followed by Sharon Weissman and Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. For some years now, the city management has made the following claims. First, that it is well-managed, that it is prudent in its policies with regard to finances, that the budget constraints we face are due to the economic downturn, especially in the last few years. And recently, in order to buttress those claims, the city hired a public relations firm, and they came up with a publication to affirm those positions with the public. But what that publication does not present are the trends and of the expenditures in salaries and benefits for the past ten years. And I have a PowerPoint that I would like to present. Now, since the year two thousand, the, uh, the Glendale payroll expense for police, fire and managers has doubled. Many of the benefits have grown by three hundred percent, and medical expenses by five hundred percent during the last ten years. But nothing stands as a budget buster, as the pension obligations and the payments that the city must make every year. What I have before you is the Glendale pension liability, the actuarial liability, in the hundreds of millions of dollars in the last ten years. That obligation was close to six hundred million dollars ten years ago. Now, this particular, let me explain, is a couple of years behind. So, the latest cafer, this information is taken from the comprehensive annual financial report, is the pension liability, the actuarial liability is a couple of years old. So, it basically went from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and nine. And as you can see, the city is now in, well in excess of one point two billion dollars in pension obligations that has grown as a consequence of the changes that occur in the pensions in the years two thousand and one to police and fire, and two thousand and five for the general employees. The payments to, in order to fulfill that obligation, have risen from eight million dollars in the year two thousand to twenty-four million dollars now, according to the latest cafer. That is a three hundred percent increase in the pension payments that are being made. Now, many of these payments are made by employees in the city, but it's still, it is the city that pays the salaries from which those pensions are made and from the pensions directly that it pays to, to helpers. Either way, it's money that the taxpayers and the taxpayers are paying. This is a city, like in many other cities, that is in significant need of pension reform. And it is my contention that that pension reform cannot come about because of the commitment that you have made to the city employee unions, who seem to have the very first stake when it comes to obtaining those benefits from the city. And we have to pay in terms of increased utility rates and increased fees in order to be able to sustain that type of obligation. Let me repeat this. We have encumbered the city, or you have, by more than six hundred million dollars since the year two thousand. Six hundred million dollars that the taxpayers need to pay somehow. And right now, the finances of the city are being constrained by the significant increase in those payments. Unfortunately, in the way that we have structured our, our public comments, we don't really have an opportunity to come back and contest anything that you may want to, uh, deny or, uh, or misinterpret from my words. This information comes from the comprehensive annual financial report, and if need be, I'll come back here next week to explain how the city has gotten itself into a significant financial pickle, primarily out of the pay, pension and other benefits that it has given the city unions, who are major contributors to the campaigns. We are in need of campaign reform in this city significantly, and we are in need of major pension reform to bring the city back to financial, a financially sound state. Thank you very much.
Sharon Weissman? Followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Najarian, council members and staff, I'm Sharon Weissman from far north Glendale, and I'm speaking as an individual. First, I'd like to publicly thank the Glendale and Los Angeles Police Departments for working together to recover our property stolen from our car parked in front of our house the first night of this year. We had driven home from the San Francisco area New Year's Day, and in the haste to unload, left some music CDs in the car door pocket. Many vehicles in our neighborhood were burglarized that night, and six of our CDs were taken. The thieves left a flashlight in our car, so they may have been scared off by something. We noticed the theft the next morning and reported it to Glendale Police Department. Officer Kim came out and took our information, and some of our neighbors also let him know they had also been hit. The next night, Los Angeles Police Department stopped a suspicious car in Tahanga and found some of our neighbor's property. Bill called the Glendale Police Department detective involved and described our CDs, and with the receipts from Amazon, he was able to reclaim them from the Glendale Police Department. It's really very nice that the system, including the cross-jurisdictional cooperation necessary in this case, works so well. Again, this week, we got good value for our taxes, when an apparent gang member from Maywood allegedly stabbed a partygoer and fled into our neighborhood. He was caught the next morning a few blocks away. We really appreciate the basic good police work that this illustrates. And I also want to especially thank the CV Weekly for providing timely information via their email blasts on the fugitive and his capture, as well as other local news events. Next, I'd like to thank council member Friedman for reminding the council to check to see that the audit recommendations regarding former elections have been implemented prior to our next election in April. I look forward to seeing them on the agenda soon. Another good step toward more corruption-proof policies is city clerk Artic Casacian's suggestion for something similar to Pasadena's Taxpayer Protection Act to spotlight city contractors and subcontractors. Hopefully, this could be implemented rapidly without a public vote. If it's at all possible to implement something now, it can really help residents decide who to vote for in the upcoming election. Even more protection against the possibility of special interest money controlling elected officials' positions would be full public financing of campaigns as called for by the League of Women Voters. I believe this would require a vote of the people, and Glendale could show the way for the rest of the state and nation by taking a leadership position on it. I don't imagine there's time for it to be on this year's ballot, but it might still be forward-thinking in, uh, two thousand and thirteen. I urge you to consider how to best move forward with election-related audit recommendations, public disclosure of those doing business with the city, and public campaign financing. Thank you for your time. And since I have a few minutes left, um, I'd like to thank Mayor Najarian for standing up for our position on the seven-ten tunnel at the upcoming session. I wish you luck, and you can do even more good work by becoming a mayor for peace in the few months remaining on your tenure. I was reminded of Elizabeth Queen's request last year as a CV high school student. Uh, she was a senior last year, because I had the pleasure of having lunch with her while she was home, um, on her winter break from her college studies, and I think she should, she still would be appreciative of joining the other cities, um, that are for peace. And, uh, one final note, I do understand there's concern with public employees' pensions, and I would like to thank the taxpayers for my tremendous raise. My P E R S pension check this month is now a dollar and eighteen cents higher than it was last year, and I'm going to save up a few months that I can get an extra cup of coffee somewhere. So, thank you very much for contributing to my retirement, and thank you for your time.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council, staff and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. And, uh, here I am back again to talk about the wasting of Glendale taxpayer money. First is the business of the Habitat, uh, proposed, uh, building housing at Toniva and Monterey. Two point three million dollars was paid for two perfectly good houses, and then we knocked them down, and we are giving the property to Housing. The housing will consist of five houses for three point six million price tag, eleven hundred square feet. That comes to about seven hundred thousand dollars for each house. I think you could buy a pretty nice house for seven hundred thousand. Uh, the next thing is ADI, and the cost that kept going up and up from the first project to the fourth, almost double. Who was watching the bank? I mean, unbelievable. And finally, to add insult to injury, is we have Mr. Caruso taking over, talking about taking over another Glendale business because he wants it. Isn't it enough that we gave him seventy-seven, uh, thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars in property and allowed him to, uh, quote-unquote, "Look after our public park for one dollar"? That would be just like me wanting, being, uh, wanting my neighbor's house because I want it, and then taking, uh, the lawn of the next neighbor because I want a bigger lawn. Um, I mean, if Mr. Caruso wants to, quote, "Help Glendale," unquote, how about him paying the three and a half million dollars in interest that we are paying presently on the forty-nine million dollar in bonds that we took out for the city to buy the property that we ended up giving Mr. Caruso for nothing, so he could put it into his family estate? Uh, I don't think Mr. Caruso should be allowed to take over somebody else's business. It would be just like somebody wanting, my next-door neighbor wanting to take over my house or my take over his. That's, that's not a reason, just because you want it. After all, we all buy our property, and, and Mr. Patel has been here many years, and that is his property, and he has operated that property, that business. So, I don't see that we're going to be getting any, we aren't even getting sales tax from Mr. Caruso. Yeah, the business is in Americana, but we're not getting any return on what, what he, we gave him for his own property. So, uh, I really feel that it's most unjust, unfair, and should not be allowed by Mr. Caruso, especially after him building the Eiffel Tower, having huge sign boards the size of houses, when he had said he was not going to be doing that type of thing when he first got the property. And I believe he was not even going to be, uh, charging for parking, since, uh, I remember all very well, I guess I ought to bring in my lawsuit when he sued me and say, and closing Harvard and closing Orange. He wasn't going to do that. Uh-uh. No, that's, that, so where's his word on anything? Uh, I just feel it's unfair for a small businessman like Mr. Patel to have to fight off, uh, a crocodile like Mr. Caruso. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards for oral communications. I will close oral communications. Any follow-up comments or remarks? Mr. Draymond?
Well, I guess I should answer one question anyway. It's Mr. Mohill's question, uh, let's see, what? No, yeah, what is the public to think? Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mohill, for confirming for the public and for all within earshot that the Glendale News Press, the LA Times, and now you yourself have stated point-blank that ADI did not do any work in my condo. It's exactly as you stated. Some independent contractors who had done work for ADI, the city of Glendale, Homenet Men, um, the Armenian Society of Los Angeles, thousands of private residences in the city, or, or property owners in the city, um, they're independent contractors. And in fact, without, without you connecting the words subcontractors and ADI together, there isn't even a story. So, thank you for clarifying that. And, um, the other answer to your question, what will people think? I think, Mr. Mohill, probably, people will think, or shall I say will continue to think, that only Mike Mohill could suggest that a housing project, which originally began moving through this city in two thousand and five, which cleared the Historic Preservation, uh, Commission in two thousand and six, and cleared DRB within the first couple of months of two thousand and seven, is somehow quid pro quo for rehab on a flood in my condo two years later. That's the kind of screwball logic that I think people, uh, will think when they hear you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? We don't have any new business, but we would... Jackie Zadi?
Sir second?
Second.
Sir adjourned. Your turn.